I'd like to call the Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Will you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, let me just say it's nice to see all of you in person, even through the plexiglass. We'll go ahead and start with the roll call.
Stephenson?
Here.
Kimball?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Hampi?
Here.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda this evening?
There's none.
Okay. With no amendments, do we have any ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and/or presentations? Mr. Manley, Mr. Cafferty?
There's none.
None?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any declaration of conflict this evening from anyone?
No.
Nope.
Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the consent calendar. Mr. Manley, anything to cover on that?
Yeah, we got the item As, the meeting minutes from July 14th, 2020, and item B is the workshop minutes from July 27th, 2020.
Hopefully, if you had a chance to take a look at that, at this point, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Call for vote.
Hampi?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
And might I just add, before we move on to number two with the workshop, thank you guys for doing that. I think it was time well spent, and we appreciate that, so thanks. Moving on, citizen issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on an issue that is not on this evening's agenda. Comments on issues that are planned for future meeting, we ask that you would hold up until then. Do we have any citizen issues this evening? Seeing none, move on to unfinished and old business. We have none? All right, then this will take us to the main point of the evening, and that is our public hearings. So, we'll go ahead and open up the Creative Homes Zone Change, and I believe Laura is presenting.
I'm Laura Jones, Associate Planner with City of Post Falls. Tonight, I'll be introducing the Creative Homes Zone Change. The applicant is Olson Engineering, property owner, Keystone Partners LLC, and tonight we have Jeremy Terzouli here, and he'll be speaking on behalf of Olson Engineering. The action item tonight is to rezone approximately 3.5 acres from the current industrial zone to the requested medium-density multifamily R2 zoning. Currently, the site is undeveloped vacant land in Post Falls. Project location is the southwest corner of Celtes and Creative Way. You can see it indicated on the map in the red hashing. As mentioned, the current land use property is vacant. There are no physical characteristics that are significant, including topology or vegetation. The water purveyor is East Green Acres Irrigation District, and the City of Post Falls is the sewer provider. Current zoning is industrial with R1, which is the Woodbridge subdivision to the west, and more industrial to the east. The northern portion above Celtes Way, north of Celtes Way, is out of the city's jurisdiction and within Cootney County, and then south of Expo Parkway is commercial. We look at six criteria for zone change, the first being that amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the comp plan and the future land use map. So, something to note is that R2 is one of the implemented zoning districts for business commercial. Future land use map shows here that it is business commercial, and I want to point out that the current zoning of industrial is not one of the implemented zoning districts. So, with this zone change, we're actually moving more towards conformance with the future land use map. A second criteria is that amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the goals and policies found in the Post Falls Comprehensive Plan, and those are outlined in detail in the staff report. The zoning should also be assigned following consideration of such items as street classification, traffic pattern, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic or natural features. It should also encourage a balance of land uses to help Post Falls remain a desirable, stable, and sustainable community. The proposed zone change will create a buffer between the R1 and Woodbridge and the industrial uses east of Creative Way, and by adding the R2 land, we're encouraging a balance of land uses within the city. Right now, there's only about 2.5% of the land in Post Falls is R2, and most of that land is already developed, so very little undeveloped R2 land within the city limits. Other criteria we look at, commercial and high-density residential zoning are typically assigned along streets with higher road classification. Celtes Way is a principal arterial, and Expo Parkway to the south is a minor arterial, so it provides good connectivity to major roadways. But to note, we're not asking for high-density residential, the applicant's asking for an R2, which is the medium density. So, still good connectivity, and the road systems can handle that zoning classification. Limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential are typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away from the higher-intensity urban activity. This ensures that adequate land is available for future housing needs. This is not really applicable criteria, as this is an infill development within an already established development pattern, and therefore compatibility with existing uses is what should be considered with this zone change. The last criteria is that industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes and may be situated away from residential zoning. So, this criteria is in line with the R2 zone change, because we are currently trying to move the industrial further away from the R1. There's currently a 20-foot buffer, excuse me, 20-foot buffer between the R1 and Woodbridge and the current industrial zoning of our subject property. By zoning this R2, it creates about a 275-foot buffer between the R1 and the industrial, and then there's still about a 75-foot roadway, excuse me, right-of-way buffer between the R2 and the industrial. And note that that 20-foot buffer between the R1 and R2 would still exist. That was dedicated with the Woodbridge plat as open space. These are the agencies that were routed for comment. We were given three comments, all of them neutral, from Post Falls Police Department, Post Falls Highway District, and the Cootney County Community Development. We did not have any public comment. That concludes my presentation for Creative Homes Zone Change. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for staff? No? No, other than, again, thank you, the breakdown of percentage of city broken down by zoning district, thank you for doing that. I think that that was absolutely fantastic to be able to see, so we do appreciate that. Okay, thank you. We'll allow the applicant come on up.
Okay. You might need to walk me through it. See if it's gonna pop up.
Is that it?
Yep, the bottom one. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Laura. That was pretty much laid it out exactly as we had discussed. So, the potential developer is a collaboration with Creative Custom Homes, local home builder collaborating with some other local individuals to develop some of this medium-density housing that we believe is desperately needed throughout Cootney County.
As you open this up, would you do me a favor and state your name and address as well?
Yes, I forgot that part. Jeremy Terzouli. I live on Kathleen Avenue in Hauser, Idaho.
So, thank you, sir.
And I'm representing Olson Engineering. So, there are a lot of reasons for a lack of medium-density housing, what I refer to as attainable housing, for our workforce throughout Cootney County, and especially in Post Falls. First and foremost, the zoning limitations have kind of created this conundrum that we see ourselves in. Land acquisition costs, not a whole lot we can do about that, or the construction costs, or quite frankly, the lending restrictions with this type of development. So, we feel there's a good opportunity for the city to create some more opportunity for these kind of boutique developers and builders. The big guys are taking down large projects and doing standard R1 housing, and this is more of a niche business that we feel like with some additional available land zoned for medium density, that we could create some good opportunity. The demand for this attainable housing, one in nine out of Idaho households are currently spending more than half of their monthly income on housing, and that statistic is actually higher in Cootney County. The rising prices for single-family homes, we've all been paying attention, and the cost of housing is going up and going up. A lot of that is out-of-state money, out-of-state buyers coming in. Again, something we can't do a lot about, but we can help control that by offering more options to the workforce housing. I find it a little odd and a little disconcerting that the person that frames your house can't afford to live in it, and that's, I think we can help stabilize that a bit by creating more options. Supply and demand will come into play at some point. More affordable and workforce housing is going to attract additional manufacturing and those wage-earned-type jobs. And again, the home prices, they're just increasing disproportionately to salaries and wages in our area, and we can hopefully help stop the bleeding a little bit by creating something in between the high-rise or mid-rise high-density residential and the single-family dwellings that we see throughout Post Falls and throughout Cootney County. This is, so the criteria for the commission to take into account, as Laura pointed out, number one is that amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the future land use map. This is our future land use map here. This is the entirety of the city and the surrounding areas. These areas in orange that I'm highlighting right now are honestly the only ones that fall into this zoning designation, and as Laura pointed out, most of them have some form of development either on them or scheduled to go on them. So, we're talking here, 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 and here. There's just not a lot of opportunity within the city for this intermediate type of housing. The R1 zoning currently is over 50% of the land in Post Falls. The second criteria is that amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the goals and policies found in the Post Falls Comprehensive Plan, and I've taken a few items straight from the comp plan that talk about buffering between high-intensity and low-intensity uses, and right now, as zoned, single-family residential next to an industrial zoning could create a very vast difference in intensity of uses. So, we feel that this type of housing, in addition to the roadway and the multi-use paths, create a nice transitional buffer between the industrial and the residential users. The comp plan also recognizes the need for smaller, more affordable units, as we define as workforce housing. And regarding land use, the business commercial land use designation in the comp plan, this is a direct quote, that additional uses, multifamily uses, may also be integrated into the business commercial area, and as we had outlined, this is currently zoned industrial with the intention of being changed to a non-industrial use. I believe business commercial was what was proposed. Number three, zoning is assigned following consideration of such items as street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic and natural features. I believe that its proximity to Woodbridge and the proximity to the major collectors and the interstate lend well to this point. And number four, I felt was not really applicable, as we are going for a medium-density residential here, not the higher-density residential. And number five, limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away from the high-intensity urban activity, which this property does. Yes, it is infill, but it is pretty far away from the Commerce Park within the Riverbend Focus area. And number six, industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes and may be situated away from residential zoning, and we're not, we're trying to get away from industrial zoning for just that reason. We would like to create that buffer while filling the gap for more affordable workforce-style So, one of the things that we're trying to create here, this isn't truly one of those missing-middle developments, as those tend to be more focused on true infill, walkability, but I believe it's right here in front of Post Falls to perhaps identify the missing middle as it can work for the city. And some of the design criteria that that term talks about is, again, that transition between higher-intensity uses and more residential uses, and it talks a lot about scaled housing, and I'll show you in the next slide. The intention of the developer is to build some townhomes here, two-story townhomes, smaller units, more attainable housing, and when I talk about scaled housing, I mean that it is not an eight, 10, 12-unit apartment building that we can all spot from a half a mile away. We're talking something that, from the street view, looks more like it belongs in a residential neighborhood, although it is more of a medium-density multifamily. The entire area around Woodbridge is very pedestrian-friendly, and we'd like to work off of that. We believe that it is strategically located in an area that allows that workforce to commute to either Spokane, Spokane Valley, Coeur d'Alene, very conveniently located to major arterials and the interstate. Setbacks and height restrictions within this zoning, again, to lend to the scaled housing idea, are very similar to the R1 zoning, so we're not looking to put a four-story building here, impeding on the privacy of the people in the Woodbridge neighborhood. And again, talking about designing it to blend in with the neighborhood context. So, this is an example. We have not spent the money on architecture or a lot of engineering to this point, because we're not at that point yet, but a very similar project were some condos that the developer had designed elsewhere. So, from the front, these are three units per structure, but with the architectural details and the facade, give it much more of a single-family look to it. Moving over to the right side, these are some potential pad sites with sufficient backyards, and as you can see from the elevations, each unit has access to its own private backyard, again, giving it the feel of a single-family. And then these would be the floor plans. Two-story, one-covered parking stall, three units in a fairly small footprint. And for now, that does it. I will stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions for the applicant this evening?
None.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let me leave this up or pull it?
Any public comment this evening in favor of?
None in favor.
Any neutral?
None.
Any opposed?
We have one that registered for Zoom. They did not attend, but his name is Dennis Livick, I think is how you say his last name, and he's in opposition. He didn't make any other comment other than that, so.
Okay.
That's what I've got.
And he didn't sign into the Zoom, so we're not able to allow him to participate this evening?
I'm sorry?
He didn't sign into the Zoom meeting.
Right.
So, we're not able to take his testimony?
Right.
Okay. So, his name and position was put into, will be put into the record, but since he's not here to be able to speak, none others?
That was it.
Okay. Then there would be no need for a rebuttal from the applicant. I would ask the Commissioners if there's any additional questions?
I do have a question for staff.
Okay.
Would putting the multi, the medium-density multifamily in the area where it's at and having industrial across the street, would it in any way affect the industrial as far as having to put additional barriers or fences or over and above what they would normally have to do in that area?
No, because the industrial use buffer is based on the use that's adjacent to the industrial property, and since it's right-of-way, which is adjacent, no additional buffer would be required.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All right, then we'll go ahead and close out the public hearing and open it up for comment. Nancy, I'll start with you.
I think my only concern was answered, and I think it fits well. It definitely puts a nice little buffer there between the single-family and the industrial, so I think it's a good fit.
So, your concern was, I know with some of our other projects that we've dealt with that were industrial, that were impeding into residential, some additional things that we required?
Yes, from the industrial property that was already there. Yeah, so I was just making sure that that wasn't going to happen, and it sounds like that's all fine, so.
Perfect. Okay. Ray?
Yeah, I think this is a, it meets the criteria of the comprehensive plan. As a matter of fact, I mean, since we just redid our comprehensive plan, looking very specifically at this area, and made the adjustment from, I think it was, used to be industrial to this, this other land use category that allows residential and doesn't allow industrial, I think it really is more of a housekeeping matter. It's something to think about with regards to buffering and whatnot. It's small, small lot, industrial, has a tendency to have a little office and a shop in the backyard is kind of where all the, whatever you want to call it, the junk ends up.
Where the magic happens?
Yeah, sure. I mean, that's where the, yeah, that's where the magic happens, behind the fence, and so in this case, that would be right adjacent, you know, 20 feet away from some single-family residential, existing house, and a barking dog and whatever else, and so conversely, you know, those same industrial-type, you know, buildings have got usually a little parking lot out front and some landscaping that's required by the city, a little facade, and so it's much nicer to look at the front of it than it is the back of it, and so by having residential facing across the street, I think it's a much better transition than trying to do it backyard-to-backyard, where the conflicts are probably going to be a lot more prevalent versus front yard-to-front yard. And so, from that standpoint, I think it's a fit. I also think that the applicant has met the criteria as laid out in the staff report and in our code. It's important that we do have a mix of residential uses and residential densities in our city, and we are really, really heavy to single-family residential and, you know, lower-density, and these medium-density projects, as the applicant pointed out, these smaller little kind of, I don't know, wonky pieces of property give them the ability to kind of get a little creative and provide something that is not the standard 6,500-square-foot single-family lot with 65, you know, 60 feet wide and 120 feet deep, et cetera, that we see a lot of. So, I think it's going to give them the ability to do something creative, maybe hit a different price point than what seems to be now the $300,000 minimum for a single-family house in Post Falls, and maybe give people the opportunity to have a true starter home in Post Falls versus what is quickly becoming out of reach for a lot of young people, so or first-time home buyers. And yeah, that's all I got to say.
Perfect. Mr. Stephenson, anything to add?
No, I agree with what everything has already been said, and I think it's going to create that buffer. If that, this plot of land had stayed industrial, it'd probably been very hard for anybody to really put something there, so I think this is a perfect fit. It kind of, it gives that little, that maybe missing middle, if you want to call it something that's going to be very similar to a single-family look and feel, but then creates that buffer between whatever industrial will be developed farther on the other side, so.
Excellent. I would absolutely agree. I think the missing middle is a good way to put it, and I do know countless individuals that I've had conversation with that are the, you know, 20-somethings that are trying to start their lives and their families and are having a very difficult time with homeownership, and I think this provides a good opportunity. So, with that, it sounds like everybody's on the same page. I would entertain a motion.
I would move to recommend, is it recommend approval or approve?
Recommend.
Recommend approval of Creative Homes Zone Change, RZNE-0004-2020, finding that it meets the approval criteria A through F as listed in the staff report, and I don't think there are any conditions.
Zoning designation of?
Oh, with the recommended zoning designation of R2. Thank you.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
I would second.
Okay. Motion is second. Call for vote?
Stephenson?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
All right. So moved. That brings us to item number five this evening, and that is new business. Do we have any new business to discuss?
There's none.
Okay. Administrative or staff reports?
None from staff.
You might want to tell them about the workshop we had with the council on the first, about the subdivision ordinance.
Yes. So, Bob Seal, Community Director, had a workshop with the city council regarding the potential for amending how we currently do the subdivision process by code, and that is through the Planning and Zoning Commission. We had a couple projects go through the emergency ordinance, which administrative staff processed the subdivisions through more of a memorandum of understanding process, an MLU, still notify the neighbors, still got public comment, and wrap that up administratively. And so, what I was informed on was that the And so, what I was informed on was that the city council seemed to be on board with doing more of an administrative process going forward. And I believe Bob Seal plans on having a workshop with you as a commission here and bring that forward to you potentially here in the upcoming months.
Okay. Any questions or thoughts with that?
Nope.
Okay. All right, appreciate the update there. Commissioner comments? Anything for the good of the order?
It's good to see you all in person.
Yes.
No, well, I like the, I like, I like the new equipment, thank you.
We like the face-to-face, we like the advance in technology, and we should do this more often, so. Okay, with that being said, then if there is nothing else, then I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
So moved.